Everyone for coming today to our Board of Trustees meeting for February 13th. If we could please start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
All right, so first we have public comment. If anybody would like to come up, you have some floor over here.
Oh, yes, and just so you know, this is one of our elected officials. As you know, whenever someone's bringing something from the state or federal, you do allow a little more time.
It won't be political, I promise. We have enough of that on TV. I'm Donnie Steele. I'm the State Representative District 54, which encompasses eight precincts in Bloomfield Township. There are five total state representatives for Bloomfield Township. I happen to be one of them. I'm coming from the north side, Orion, Auburn Hills, Bloomfield Hills, and a portion of Oakland Township. So I just wanted to introduce myself. I just, I'm just newly elected, and I just wanted to be the face and the ears and the eyes of this community the best I can. I just wanted to reach out to the board, introduce myself. I gave out a couple cards. Please call me if I can help out that you need as a township level or resident-wise as a local level. Please reach out to me. Donnie Steele, Orion Township and Bloomfield Township. So, thank you.
Congratulations on your election.
And Donnie was the president of our Oakland chapter of the Michigan Township Association that we served on, so thank you for the work you did there as well.
And it was the treasure of Orion.
I was gonna add that, exactly.
Yeah, Orion Township treasure.
We gotta speak you up a little.
Orion.
Well, it's nice to meet you. Oh, don't call it Orion.
Orion, we were talking about that earlier.
At least it's not what Jack Curtis calls.
Orion unless you say Orion.
Oh. Is there anyone else that would like to talk in public comment? If so, please come on up. All right, we'll close public comment. Next, we have the Board Minutes. We've all had a chance to look, and I believe if there's no changes, we will look for a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Trustee Shosack.
Support.
Support by Trustee Barnett. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That passes. Next, we have the Board's, to approve the Board Budget Study Session Minutes for January 30th. Unless there's any corrections or comments, I'd look for a motion.
There are some revisions that you'll see throughout the report, some minor revisions that we'll put on your desk, and I think these were also publicized.
For the budget study session?
For the investment study session.
Oh, so we're on the Board Budget Study Session.
I'm sorry, I jumped, I'm sorry.
That's why you threw me off, I'm like, I don't have the investment.
I was going, I'm sorry, I apologize.
That's all right. So for the Board Budget Study Session, do we have any changes for those?
Make a motion to approve.
Motion by Treasurer Keeps.
Support.
Support by Trustee Faqui. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, and I know we do have some changes to the investment ones.
Okay, so if you look on the, on the report, you'll see in various sections, there are some items that have been crossed out and then revised with new figures. So those changes are noted, and there's also some verbiage, just adding some additional information under one of the sections. Other than that, we're good to go. You know, on that basis, I'll make a motion to approve as revised.
Support.
Motion by Treasurer Keeps. Support by Trustee Barnett. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you for catching us. And next, we have our public hearing for the considering the approval of a special land use and site plan for the BMW dealership located at 1845 South Telegraph. We have Andrea Bibby, BMW Director.
Hello, good evening. I'm just gonna call my phone over here. Okay. Well, good evening. This evening I'll be presenting, again, my name's Andrea Bibby. I'm with the Planning Division here at Bloomfield Township. What I'm presenting this evening is the first of two site plan requests before the Board. The first is for a location at 1845 Telegraph, which you'll see an aerial there up on your screen. This is the current BMW dealership, which is located on the east side of Telegraph, north of Square Lake, at 1845 Telegraph. The proposal this, whoa, sorry. The proposal this evening, and you can see up on your screen on the zoning map, that this property is in fact zoned B3, so this is a permitted use within the B3 zoning district. I do want to point out that the, when BMW originally occupied this building back in 2014, that they did seek a variance for a car dealership to be located on a property that's less than 10 acres, because our ordinance requires a minimum of 10 acres for car dealerships. And they did, were granted a variance at that time. And then at this time around, as they're coming back before you here now in 2023, they also had to go back before the zoning board, which they did receive a variance at last month's zoning board meeting to expand on a non-conforming lot. So that has been, was approved by the Zoning Board of Appeals at last month's meeting. So again, the property is zoned B3. The proposal is on behalf of UAG Realty, is seeking approval for a 3,533 square foot car wash addition. The car wash addition is located up on your screen, if you can see, if you can orientate yourself, you'll see along the left side would be Telegraph Road, and then in the rear portion is where the proposed car wash is, is being added. The elevations and materials of this car wash will match the existing elevation and materials of the building. It does have a low profile, it's a one-story addition, so there will be no visibility from Telegraph Road. In addition to the car wash addition, they are requesting outdoor storage bays, which are located, if you look there up on your screen, you can see them located, actually, let me get a, let me get a highlighter here for you. They're located along the, which would be the southernmost, southeasterly lot line in this area here. They are proposing some masonry enclosures for some outdoor storage. That area right there does immediately abut the storage area for the menards, so there is no residential, there's no abutting of residential of the site. If you can, if you want to look here up on your screen, you can notice that there's no immediately adjacent residential. So with this proposal, they are proposing, as I stated, the car wash addition. They're proposing some outdoor storage bay areas along here. They are also proposing two EV charging stations located here in the rear parking lot, and those are to be used by the dealership for their cars solely, as well as they are proposing to do an outdoor fuel storage tank, which is located here within the parking lot. They are including a masonry screen wall that will in fact screen any visibility from Telegraph Road to that storage for their gasoline storage tank. And again, we do have representatives here from BMW, and they can answer any questions that you may have, but the purpose of these additions is to use the, the outdoor storage and the UV charging stations, again, is to service their customers. It's for cars that they're either servicing or selling to their clientele, and that is the purpose of them extending, expanding these uses on their site. With that, it's a, it's a pretty straightforward site plan. As I stated, they have ample parking, they have 479 parking spaces on site, so they have ample parking for the use in which they have. They do, they did submit a landscape plan, because they are removing one tree within the parking lot to accommodate for the outdoor storage base, and they will be replacing that as required, in accordance with our zoning ordinance. The outdoor masonry enclosures will include wood plank gates, and again, that is located in the area that immediately abuts the menard storage area. In addition, they did seek a variance from the Zoning Board of Appeals to, for a new 60-foot-high flagpole, so that was also approved by the zoning board. Our ordinance does require those to be 30 feet or under, but they did seek a variance to allow for that. With that, there are no additional impacts in terms of noise, odor, or light. There's no new parking lot lighting that is proposed along with this. And I also, as I'd stated earlier, this is, as you can see here, it's masonry enclosure with wooden gates, which would be required for any sort of outdoor dumpster or storage areas on a commercial property, and because this is a, a car dealership, there is some ancillary outdoor, outdoor storage, which is as part of the use. With that, this did have an opportunity to go before our various departments for review. Our Fire Department and Police Department dated, stated that they have no issues with the proposal. Engineering and Environmental Services noted that upon site plan approval by the Township Board and prior to the issuance of any building permits, they would have to, they would have to receive approval from the Michigan Licensing Regulatory Affairs, which is, the acronym would be LAURA, that is for the installation of the 800-gallon gasoline tank that they're proposing. With that, as I stated, the exterior of the building, as you can see on your screen, is it's made up of the same, comprised of the same materials of the existing building, as I stated, a lower profile, so there is no visibility from really the general public. This did have an opportunity to be reviewed by our Design Review Board on December 7th, where they did have a favorable recommendation to forward it on to the Zoning Board of Appeals and ultimately the Township Board for your final consideration. And the December 19th, 2022 Planning Commission meeting, they did forward on a recommendation to the Township Boards with the requirements of compliance with the Township's departments, compliance with the Township's landscape architect, as well as seeking the variances in which I had mentioned before the Zoning Board of Appeals, which were in fact granted on January 10th, 2023. Again, those two variances were the height of the flagpole, exceeding 30 feet, as well as them expanding on a site that's non-conforming in terms of acreage. With that, the Township Board, we're asking you to consider this request. We do have representatives here from BMW that could answer any questions, and I can certainly answer any questions as well, and we would ask that the Township Board consider under what conditions you would consider approval for this site plan. And with that, I can answer any questions, or would you like to have a representative come up and join us? That'd be great. And here up on the screen, we'll show you the colored elevations of the proposed addition.
And then before we do the Board questions, we'll do the public hearing part. If you want to add yours, and then we'll do the public hearing after yours.
My name is Scott Munchnick. I'm the architect representing the BMW dealership and the proposed addition. Everything I had written down to say, Andrea said eloquently already, so do you have any questions from us?
It's a public hearing, so before we talk, did you want to add anything else?
I think we're good.
All right, then if anyone's here from the public, I'd like to open up public comment. Close public comment, and then we'll bring it back to the Board. Does anyone have any questions for Andrea or the representatives from BMW?
I guess I have a question, Andrea. The store, I, I think it's a, the use is great. I'm a customer, so I like the car wash, that's good, get it done quicker. I guess my only thought was screening of the masonry wall around the storage tank. Has that been addressed or discussed, or is that landscaped around that?
I guess I'd have to take a double look at the landscape plan. Somebody here can probably respond, actually.
So it's not really in an area landscaping, it was taking out some parking spaces right along the south edge of the property. The, there is a green belt already between that parking and the property line. You can go back one, go back one, two.
Site plan?
Yeah, we could do that. So that's where it is, and it's all masonry, it's covered for the miscellaneous storage.
That's the car wash.
I think he's talking about for the gasoline.
I'm talking about the gas.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Yeah, it's a self-contained above-ground unit, and we're screening the whole thing from Telegraph with a masonry wall.
And I guess I'm, I'm wondering if there's, if there's them landscaping in front of the masonry wall, so we're not just seeing the masonry wall in the middle of the parking lot.
No, Jason Longhurst with Noah and Frau, civil engineer. There is no, there's no landscaping in front of the, the masonry wall, but if you look, I think there's about six landscape islands between the wall and the right away for Telegraph. So there's ample opportunity for the landscaping that's there, and the vehicles that are parked between there and the wall to fully obscure it.
Well, I'm, I'm assuming that you've got it separate. I mean, there'd be plenty of opportunity to put it closer to any of those structures, but because of, it's an enormous gas tank, you want to have some distance between that and any of the other structures? Because, you know, like, why don't you just push it close to the building? That's why we also asked them to move the EV charger away from that big fuel tank? So thanks for moving that, by the way.
Yeah, no, it, it makes sense, you have to have it separate.
Does anyone else have any other questions? I look for a motion.
Make a motion, certainly ample screening from Telegraph, and it does not impact residential areas, so I'd make a motion that's generally approved with the considerations that have been presented.
Support to Trustee Barnett, support by Treasurer Keeps. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That does pass?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have considering the approval of site pan, site plan requests for improvements to the Brother Rice High School. Andrea's here again.
Yeah, so the second request that we have before you this evening is located at 7101 Lhasa Road. You can see highlighted here on your screen is an aerial of Brother Rice High School. The proposal that we're, you're asking you to consider this evening is approximately a 9,228-square-foot building addition, which would be located along the northerly elevation of the school. In fact, it's really interior to the site, just south of McInerney Drive is where the proposed addition. In addition to the addition, yes, they are also looking to do some site improvements to improve a reconfigured student pickup and drop-off area as well. The property is zoned R1, and schools are a permitted use within the R1 zoning classification. In here, you can see the site plan, the proposed addition is located just in this area here. You can see it highlighted in like a grayish tone. And then there's also a proposal to improve and to add the student pickup and drop-off loop. Additionally, they are seeking some changes within this parking, only within this parking area here, where they're going to be adding some landscaping, as well as a raised pathway that's going to connect, provide a pedestrian access within the parking field. So the proposed site plans and modification are actually part of an overall site plan that Brother Rice has developed, which entails different phases of construction, which is intended to be developed as funding becomes available. As noted by the applicant in their cover memo dated October 13th, 2022, the intention of the proposed improvements is for the benefit of the current students. This is not intended to, with this addition, they are not looking to increase capacity or increase enrollment. This is solely using, taking a existing area that houses some mechanical equipment, and they're going to be adding the addition to move some of that mechanical equipment indoors, as well as I stated, improving that pickup and drop-off area as well. They, within the master plan, they do show two outbuildings that are proposed in the future, and those are actually shown on the site plan for the purpose of, of understanding, I guess, in the future of what the intentions are as part of their master plan. But I do want to note that any additional accessory buildings or structures that would be proposed in the future would in fact have to go back before the Design Review Board and ultimately the Zoning Board of Appeals as well. But because the school wanted to present, and they can come up here as well and, and share additional information about their long-term, long-range plan, they wanted to include an addition of a, like a concessions building, which would be located here just to the west of the existing football field, as well as a storage area down here that would be to the south of the field. So I do note within the staff report that anything in the, in the future would in fact have to come back before the Township for approval. So the improved pickup and drop-off area has been that the circulation and drive has been reviewed by our traffic engineer. There was a traffic impact study that was completed by Tetra Tech and was provided on behalf of the applicant and was reviewed by Fishbeck in conformance with the Township requirements, and they did find that the traffic study meets the standards for the best traffic engineering practices, and I think overall, it's, from hearing from the representatives, it is an improvement by far that they're adding this pickup-drop-off area. So this does not make them short in parking, the reconfigured parking layout, as I stated, they are making some changes to that northerly parking area. They will, they are going to lose 30 parking spaces, but they still do provide 336 parking spaces on site. And I also wanted to note that, as they have in the past, they continue, they do have a shared parking arrangement with Marion High School and St. Regis, and that has worked out well, from our understanding, we haven't had any issues, that there are at times when there's peak use at any of those particular institutions or with, at the church, that they do utilize the parking lots throughout the campus, if you will. So I just wanted to point that out. As I stated, the redesigned parking lot area, which is located up on your screen, they are in fact enhancing the landscaping. A landscape plan was provided and reviewed by Township's landscape architect. The report dated September 15th concludes that the proposed landscape plan meets the intent of the zoning ordinance, and based on a total of 113 reconfigured parking spaces, they are planting 19 more trees within the parking field. So they do in fact exceed the requirement as it pertains to parking lot landscaping. This is a kind of a close-up of what the proposed addition will be housing. Again, this would probably be something better to be explained by representatives themselves, but it is, as I stated, is still going to remain mainly a, an area to house mechanicals to serve, to serve the school, but I believe there's, as you can imagine, some updates that are coming along with, with that improvement as well. This has in fact been reviewed by our various departments, stating that they have no objection or no concerns with the proposal. The Fire Department noting that there would be any additional code requirements upon building permit submittal would be required. No concerns on behalf of the Police Department, and Engineering and Environmental Services noting that they would in fact need to have a engineering plan submitted prior to the issuance of a building permit. Up here on your screen, you can see the proposed elevation for the new entrance. This is, again, this would be, if you're looking up at the elevations, the bottom would be facing St. Regis, and then this is in fact the new access point where students can walk from that drop-off area to enter into, into the building. It does not exceed the permitted height, so they were careful to make sure that they stayed within the confines of the, of the permitted height of the structure. And here you can see the east and west elevations have no change, and then here's just some site photos, you can see of where the proposed addition is, is to be located. This did have, have an opportunity to go before the Planning Commission on December 19th, 2022, and the Planning Commission did make a, a positive recommendation to the Township Board for their consideration. As part of the motion that was by the Planning Commission, their conditions include compliance with the requirements of the Township departments, compliance with the requirements of the Township's landscape architect, compliance with the requirements of the Township's traffic engineer, and then seeking any necessary approval by the Design Review Board and the Zoning Board of Appeals for any future accessory structures. So we would ask that the Board consider those same conditions this evening. I would be more than happy to answer any questions, and I also know that we have, we do have some staff here and representatives from the architectural firm who can, that can speak on behalf of the project.
My name is Paul Stohobiak. I'm actually the chairman of the Facilities Committee at Brother Rice. We have Tom Reedy, the president of Brother Rice, Brandon Sundberg, and Jacob Cleef from Integrated Design Solutions. I'll start here, as you see it, as Andrea explained, we're not adding classrooms, we're trying to improve the overall function, as well as the visual impact of the school. The northern and eastern part of the school that faces the, the track, the lacrosse and the football fields is original 1960s vintage. If you drive up Lhasa, as most people that come, don't come in to visit, that was not exactly a modern, but it's 1989 addition to the school at that point in time. So as we come around it in 1960, the cafeteria was totally enclosed, no access to daylight, low ceiling height. The gym itself has one, as it exists today, one full-court practice court within it, and some of the things we were looking to do, and it created problems, you can only conduct one practice at a time. Within the gym proper, there was a stage, there was a bookstore, that we're able to clear out and fit rotated 90 degrees, two full-court basketball courts for practice, one the opposite direction of its, of its current for game day situations within the existing envelope. What you see on the very, on the bottom right is if, the new enclosure of that same gymnasium footprint, same height, same footprint, new exterior facade, totally renovated, interior, air-conditioned, multiple practice courts. What you see on the bottom right is kind of as you, you're driving down McInerney between St. Regis and the school, and you can kind of see both in that one and the view up above, where the addition comes, it rises in height, it's glass-filled, and then it's an expansion of the kitchen and the cafeteria. In the current size, they have to do three or four, Tom?
Six.
Six lunch periods to get all the current students through, where with the expanded, they can go to a more normal schedule with three or two?
Two.
Two. So functionality, it, it works, it gives the students daylight, a common gathering place. If you want to flip back to the plan, Andrea, I can laser.
Oops, sorry about that.
Let's go one more to the floor plan, I think is next. One more. There we go. So again, the, the existing gym footprint, right now, the game day court runs north-south, and it's not a full court length, but when we tear out the stage and some offices, rotate it, we now get a more typical today gym with, today, visitors and home team are both on the same side of the court. We can separate that and, and be helpful to parents where they're, they're not having to come for the, and it's usually the freshmen that get the short end of the schedule of the practice assignments, and they're also the people that parents have to drive. So, you know, that, that's an improvement. Today, the existing cafeteria is located right here. The school's energy plant is located to the north, so it's landlocked in between, no access to daylight. The energy plant is 1960s vintage, dumpsters outside, transformer parked out there. Our first phase would be to create this new energy plant along McInerney, where it's all enclosed, overhead doors for the trash pickup, the transformer's enclosed, and that gives us the freedom to expand to the north, create a modern-day kitchen and a commons that will serve not only lunch, but preschool meetings, a little elevated area where they can have after-school programs and, and the like. Not add any classrooms. It's phased, our construction needs to happen primarily during the summers, but we'll stretch beyond at, at times, that's our biggest point, and we will be occupied throughout. So again, we're prepared to start construction on that energy plant. Once that's done, the second phase would be take the gym offline, and we would, we would share gym with Marion while it's under construction, so the interior of that could happen during the school year. The, excuse me, the associated site work would happen during the summer as we're trafficking in and out. And then once the gym is done, we would close the cafeteria. The same service that provides food service preparations for Marion does for Brother Rice as well. When Marion, a few years back, renovated their cafeteria, he worked out of the Brother Rice kitchen and provided food over in the gym or whatever. The reverse would happen here. When our gym is done, that'd be their place to serve students while the commons cafeteria is under construction, and we'll go from there. And we, we've got to hit cycles in between, when it's appropriate to, to do it. The vast majority of our site improvements, as Andrea explained, for drop-off would happen with the gym. The last piece- The last pieces of paving, we don't want to put something down and then have the major construction after, so we're going to be kind of working our way back offsite as we go. And it's donor funded. We've had some very successful support for this master plan and would expect that we can complete this in a timely manner, but it is the expectation from Brother Rice's board that the funding is there to support as we chip off each of these phases. Tom, I don't know if there's anything else you want to add, or we'll take questions or public comments.
I'm Tom Riede with Brother Rice and happy to answer any questions anyone may have.
I don't have any questions, but having experienced construction in Birmingham schools with my kids, then when I worked in Bloomfield Hills, and I see exactly what you're saying with the needs, the gymnasium, this, you know, a dingy cafeteria that you can't serve the kids in a reasonable amount of time, and the drop off, I mean, that's a huge safety thing. I think you've got really good reasons for what you're doing and laid out a very good plan.
Could not have chosen a more poor photo of the existing pickup-drop off area than that potholed photo, so you can see where the needs are.
It was a perfect time.
Thanks a lot for showing that one. We have some beautiful spots on our campus. Our campus is gorgeous, that is one of the better spots.
Yeah, that was a little distracting. Sorry about that.
I think it was perfectly placed for that.
You can see the need.
Are you going to remain present the whole time through all the construction and everything?
Well, I got a seventh grader at St. Regis who's my youngest, I got a junior and I got a freshman, so I have strict instructions from him that he wants to see this completed. So, yeah, I hope so. I've enjoyed my time there.
Congratulations.
I was just going to add that, as I said at the planning commission, it's a phenomenal presentation and reuse of the property and bringing up to better use facilities for the students. So hopefully you see it all the way through because, you know, certainly it's tired, it's in need, it's a great school, but facilities wise, you know, in agreement, so.
We've done some things on the inside already that have just been really well received, so the exterior would be icy on the cake.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. Is McInerney a private road?
Yes.
Have you guys, is that still what it looks like?
It is, it is a shared road, the property line between Brother Rice and St. Regis, center line of the road, as everybody's going in and out. But the intent would be, that is the path in which the vast majority of the, there's significantly increased site storm drainage, storage, and filtration requirements by current guidelines. All of that work will happen in McInerney Drive, we'll tear up all the potholed areas, get our new sewers and detention and filtration structures within the drop off island at the back, so it's serving multiple purposes of separating the students, but also giving us a place to construct a serviceable area for those things. So the intent when we go, everything through this area at the end will be all new pavement.
Okay, so it's part of this project?
Part of this project, yes.
Is that a curb cut onto, into the St. Regis parking lot? I'm not familiar with that street, so I don't.
There, if we go back to the site plan, St. Regis has.
So after, they've got a little circle, half circle.
They've got a circle drop off, they've got an access north-south through their parking that accesses onto McInerney as well right there, and then it is closed off beyond that.
Okay, and so you could theoretically cut through to get to Lincoln, right?
You can.
That happen?
Well, back when, I tell you, the schools have, and Tom could speak specifically to time, but there is an inbound St. Regis parent drive pickup that goes into there and is quite stacked up. If you were a Brother Rice student parking, you know, with your parking pass down here, you wouldn't get through there. I mean, if you stayed for football practice and school was gone, yes, you could. We were back here 12 years ago for a site plan update for some other things, and that traffic, there was a request from the neighboring that signage was put that there were no right turns, you could only turn left on Lincoln back out to Loser. But our goal with what we've done here, we are also proposing on the St. Regis side, probably one of the biggest current backups for outbound traffic out of Brother Rice, assuming Regis's outbound goes to Lincoln. It's the fact that if you're parked outbound to Loser, there isn't a left turn. If you're turning left, everybody's stuck behind you until you can clear. We're going to add a right turn curb cut lane so that those left turners aren't bottling things up. We're also going to look to control the students. Again, as parents drop off, we widened McInerney once we got up to this energy plant, three lanes of drop off, they come back out. A student coming in could pass the lineup of drop off parents, get to the curb cut where they entered their parking zone. And the intent is at the end of school, this would be coned, and they'd have to come, and we can filter them back into here to merge with the Regis traffic that's happening. But there is some staggering of the closing times, but it still is, there's a 15 to 20 minute period in the morning and in the afternoon where it's a lot of traffic.
And I'm assuming the traffic study would have looked at the times that St. Regis was having pickup and drop off at the same time that Rice is doing.
At the three entities, as Andrea pointed out, work together very well and as much as they can. Their St. Regis Sunday, Saturday afternoon masses is a busy time for them. A Tuesday or a Friday night basketball game is a busy time for Brother Rice or Marion, and they share each other's parking lots where they have very few things that are simultaneously heavy loaded.
Otherwise, I'll, you know, I'm just, I'm glad that that was all taken a look at as far as your traffic study and your planning, and I'll echo the comments of my colleagues that I think this is a great plan. Obviously, you know, all schools are, especially private schools, are fighting for enrollment, and so this is, I assume will be a big help.
Yes, thank you.
Especially with Eddie O there, you need to make sure that basketball is strong. He was at Andover when I was there.
We want to make him as happy as possible, absolutely.
You have a good one with him.
He just turned 60 last week, so.
Don't tell him.
Yeah, we're taking good care of him.
Yeah, I think he was in his first or second year as a teacher at Andover when I was there.
I will tell him that tomorrow.
Yeah, he'll remember, he might have a little PTSD from his student. I might have been a handful. If anybody has any other questions, otherwise I'd look for a motion.
I would like to make a motion to approve as presented based on following all of the conditions of the township.
Motion by trustee Murray.
Support.
Support by trustee Barnett, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That does pass.
Thank you.
Thank you, good luck.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'd love to come for a tour when you get it all done.
So next we have another Brother Rice, we have considering approval of the Brother Rice High School's application for a public auction license, and we have Clark Brock to present.
Okay, this is the time that Brother Rice makes an application to the township for their annual auction. They will on March 18th, 2023, have a fundraiser at the Birmingham Country Club, and they're very good at filling out all the required forms. We do have the completed application, the completed proof of bond with sureties, and the detailed inventory as required by the permit and the state law, and I recommend approval.
Any questions? If I look for a motion?
Simo.
Motion by trustee Barnett?
Support.
Support by trustee Shostak, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That passes too. Good luck.
Yeah.
Every little bit counts. Next we have considering approval of the agreement for participation with the Oakland County Sheriff's Office Special Weapons and, we'll say SWAT, team between Oakland County. And we have Chief Gallagher here today.
Good evening again. Before you tonight, we're asking for consideration for us to become a participating member of the Oakland County Special Weapon and Tactics Team, obviously SWAT for short of that. In 2020 and early '21, Oakland County opened their Special Weapons and Tactics Team to a multi-jurisdictional response. They merged their team with the South End team, which consisted of Madison Heights, Royal Oak, Huntington Woods, Ferndale, Hazel Park, I think maybe Oak Park was on there as well. At that time, the need for those multiple teams did not exist, and it was, it's not cost effective really to run your own team. At this time, Southfield, Troy, and West Bloomfield still have their own teams. So we are requesting, our proposal is for only one officer at this time. The requirements for Bloomfield Township is that we provide the manpower and then the salary of the employee if they are called out, whether they're on duty, it'd be a regular duty day. If for some reason an incident occurs where they're needed outside of those hours, we'd pay the overtime hours. They are a very well-trained team, so every third Wednesday of the month, and then one week in the summer, they do training. Up, their summertime training is up at Camp Grayling with other SWAT teams as well. The advantages to us, we've used, our most recent use of the team was a year ago this week, actually, same night as the Oakland Hills fire, unfortunately, where, and just a real brief synopsis, I won't go on, and it was armed robbery out of Waterford that was tracked here to Bloomfield Township, and the subjects barricaded themselves in the home. So we ended up calling them out. Luckily, there was enough members on duty in the city of Pontiac at the time that it was a successful resolution before the whole team came out. Our participation in this would not stop Oakland County from helping us in the need that we do. It's just a strong belief with our partnership with Oakland County and area agencies that we, again, it's a regional task force that is, it used to be a $2,500 fee to join the team, that has been since waived. I did have an opportunity to present Dirk with the interlocal agreement. One of the advantages on there is that the liability during an incident falls on the sheriff's department as long as the officer is working under the direction of the SWAT commanders. If they operate outside of that, it's our problem, which I don't foresee that being the case. Again, to have somebody with a specialized training here in Bloomfield Township, we're all trained for active shooter incidents and incident response, but it's those barricaded situations, hostage situations, slow, low frequency, high risk incidents that it's an advantage to our agency to have somebody on that type of training. And the residual factor is, is one of the things any new officer that wants to come in and says, what opportunities do you have? I was just at the MACP conference this weekend, and opportunity was one thing they say keeps people at their current employers. So Danny and I talked about it, and she had some, you know, questions. One of them was, how many times a year are they activated? It's, let's say, average, one time a month. Obviously, it depends on the behavior of our residents in Oakland County, but it's been an average of about one time. In 2021, they had 14 callouts. That includes high-risk search warrants, so if the narcotics teams or any of the other narcotics teams in the area know of a violent subject armed, they'll use this team as the entry team instead of doing it on our own like when I was in. And in 2020, they only had nine callouts total. They are, they will operate outside the county if Wayne County or Detroit is involved in a three, four day event, they will absolutely look for outside teams. So the primary focus is Oakland County, but there are situations where they could end up outside the county if they were helping. The most recent that I know of was when Dearborn had their Hampton Inn active shooter or shooting in the building. Oakland County just happened to be down doing a search warrant, someone else responded to that scene to assist with their gear. So it's about a 35-man team right now with about nine agencies, and I've talked to two other bordering agencies who are looking at also joining. So it's a relatively new multi-jurisdictional option. Before that, it was solely Oakland County people. So I look for your support at us joining it. Right now, we're signing one officer, and we'll evaluate that in the future, maybe adding a second if it's successful.
I did have a bunch of questions, and I appreciate you answering all those. Some of the other highlights were that you said if we decide after a year or two we don't want to continue, there's the out clause, so that made it easier not having to pay the $2,500.
That's correct.
And the liability.
Yeah, the liability and injuries. Danny asked about injuries, you know, they have, knock on wood, I don't like to, you know, but sprained ankles are about the serious that they've seen. The tactics behind these have changed over the years, and if you pay attention to Detroit, Detroit's one of the very few full-time teams left in the country, but the tactics have changed reference to these. It's more of a patient, you know, not dynamic entries unless there's some type of immediate risk to people. But a lot of it's patience and hostage negotiations and things of that nature that just brings the value back to our residents. And we've probably used the team, I don't know, a good 15 times in my career throughout our time, so.
Anyone else have any questions?
Chief, first of all, I commend you for bringing this to us, and would ask if you would, well, I guess the reason I commend you is not only do we have the need, and it's occasional, but as we're being trained in terms of emergency situations, the more relationships we have with other departments, and even like you look at the Bethel situation, and we were very much working with other departments hand in hand, and it worked very well for everyone. So I think the more relationships we have, the better off we are as a community and the better off as a department. What other task forces is the department currently involved in?
We currently have a member in the Troy Special Investigations Unit. That unit is a surveillance unit housed out of Troy. That's another multi-jurisdictional with Auburn Hills, Royal Oak, Troy, ourselves, Birmingham, and I believe that's it. We have Oakland County Narcotics, which is about 17 or 18 different departments. In that, we have a member in the Oakland, our Oakland County Violent Crimes and Gangs Task Force, one officer into that. That is, these are all about three-year assignments, and we rotate them every three years. So it seems like every year we have an opportunity for an officer to get that. The Identity Theft Task Force, we're also a part of, that comes out of our Investigations Division, that's more of a long-term, that's really that rotated position. A detective gets into there, and it's out of our Investigations Unit. So, and in the future, I'm hoping with manpower gets there, we may propose next year, I would really like to join a member of the DEA, that's something we're looking into, but with our projected manpower numbers this year and potential retirements, we just can't pull from Road Patrol to continue that. So that's something I'll be, Danny and I have talked about, but that's something down the road I will be bringing to the board to support. And I think it's important for you to support these, to understand what we're trying to do. And, you know, I don't, Bob, one of our FTOs, Officer Zeremba, but that's one thing we get asked now, is we're not getting so much asked, what's your top pay anymore? That's a lateral, an officer that's coming laterally is going to ask us that, but the majority of what we're hearing in our communities are, what opportunities do I have down the road? And whether we like it or not, fentanyl and meth are now very, very prevalent in our community, and again, it's a regional task force, I think, that in the future will benefit us.
I think once you do get your staff up from all the new, bringing back some of the others, it'll get there.
Yeah, I'm hoping, and I'll bring that back as soon as we know. I don't, again, I don't want to short our residents in Bloomfield Township, but, you know, we're looking into that.
I think it sounds like a great opportunity and a great way to, you know, grow the exposure and grow, and that will just be, and I'm sure you'll come back to us next year and let us know how the first year went, but will it be the same officer, and you rotate every three years, once a year? Will it change, or will one officer be the dedicated officer?
What we find, what we find with a team such as this, this would not be something that would change out frequently. You would be more apt to add a second person to it if the team, a lot of times, people promote out of it. So L. County, the reason why they have five or six openings is because they've had, you know, officers or commanders promote out of those positions. With this type of training, I think it would be too hard, and your callouts are too short at that time, but it's definitely something we will look into. And we have to do an internal selection process with this. And the reason why I'm bringing it to you now is they'd usually do their training or selection process in May, April, May. Just because we select an internal candidate in Bloomfield Township, they also have to go through a rigorous training process through Oakland County, and they don't cut corners for that. So let's say we pick our best, and they just don't make the physical requirements or the shooting requirements, then we wait a year, or possibly until they have another selection process. So it's not, these are very advanced teams that you, again, they're low frequency, high risk, that we have to have the best of the best and willing to do the extra work.
Well, that makes sense, because with all the required training, if you were to rotate people out, it would be more intensive training, more frequent where it is.
That's correct, and they can bring back the knowledge and experience to help us with our trainings that we put on that you will all be exposed to.
I look for a motion?
So moved.
Motion by trustee Shostak? Support by trustee Murray, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed?
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
And we have some great news, also with Chief Gallagher. And we have some great news, also a Chief Gallagher of presentation concerning the Michigan Association of Chiefs Police Reaccreditation.
So last week, myself and four other officers attended the Michigan Association of Chiefs of Police Conference up in Grand Rapids, and every year there, they do, we go through a process of reaccreditation and meet with a council. This accreditation is, consists of 104 standards that we have to meet. We did this in 2019. Officers Zeremba and Lieutenant Murphy were our accreditation managers. At that time, we had a 10, 10, 12-person team that went through every policy and rewrote every policy that we had here in Bloomfield Township as a police department to bring us up to current best practices and standards in our field. It really, there's a lot of hard work that goes into that, and a lot of conversations about are we doing things the right way? And it's really self-reflection of our department to say, we can be better in certain areas. And one of the benefits is that we're doing it on a volunteer basis, and when I say "we," law enforcement in the state of Michigan, I think there was 100 and...
120 in the process, 60 accredited.
So 120 in the process, 60 accredited, so, which is a great increase from where we were when we first got accredited. But every three years, we have to go through that reaccreditation process, and along that way, it takes many man-hours. We have to provide a proof to all those standards that we do, meaning if it's a use of force, Lieutenant Murphy and Bob have to upload that proof to make sure it meets that standard. In our, we had zero applied discretions, which means we didn't really have anything where we said, we don't do that properly, or we're not, or we disagree with that standard, and we're not going to apply any of, you know, we're going to use our discretion not to conform to that. We had zero of those, which they commented on at the hearing, that that's very uncommon. But I'll, it's a credit to our agency and the officers that we are doing it the right way, and we are, but Bob, I mean, a huge thank you goes out to Bob and recognition to Bob and Lieutenant Murphy. They, for the last three years, I don't know, maybe once a month, every other month, they were upstairs for two or three days, making sure we stayed on top of it. It's typically a two-day process to get reaccredited. They were here for seven hours because of, because of the work they do. On top of that, we've really allowed our guys to be assessors for the state, so Bob has traveled around, and we will loan them as long as our manpower permits to any agency going through the accreditation process, so that they can assess how those agencies are doing it and provide that feedback to that agency as well. But on top of that, we then find out maybe somebody is doing something a little better than us, and they run back and say, hey. So I appreciate Bob and Lieutenant Murphy for their hard work. It's, it's not easy. And they are going to kind of take a leadership mentorship role for two others, Tom Smiley and Officer Sergeant A.J. Sparks. We're going to kind of fill their shoes, but they're not going real far because we need them in this process. And I was impressed this week, the hearings are, I mean, they're dry, right? But Bob sat through two or three other hearings of agencies where he was able to assist and to watch their success. So I think it's a huge thing, and we got our, our new plaque, so we wanted...
I'll note it up so that Trustee Murray can get a photo of it.
Sure.
Yeah.
Come on, bud.
Thank you.
Yeah, this is a reflection of our entire agency and all the officers who are, that are here and support staff and dispatchers for really what they do.
Just want to add...
Congratulations.
Yeah, thank you so much.
I think this is worth a standing ovation here.
Yeah.
This is pretty amazing.
Thank you. And we appreciate, and we appreciate your support and community support. The community is a big reason why we can, can do what we do, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
We appreciate all the work you put in. Thank you. Thank you for taking that. So next, we have considering the approval for a budget amendment to the transfers-out activity in the general fund, and we have Jason Tice, our Director of Townwide Finance.
Evening. There's no slideshow. Everything was in the packet. Around this time, for the last few years, I've come before you with, with good news, with where we are standing with the current budget year. So this is our year ending March 31, 2023. Looking for a budget amendment. There's a few things that have lent to surplus of funds this year greater than what we had thought when the budget was approved. Some of those were discussed at the budget study session, but I'll go through a handful of those. So the, on the revenue side, state revenue sharing was higher than expected, and, you know, we do our best with the information they provided, and so those projections were based on their published documents and have come in better than they even thought they would. Also, investment earnings with some movement between myself and the treasurer. Funds out of the investment pool, which is lower rates to latter T-bills, as well as a sweep account with Chase with a, in a money market that has a daily floating rate, has served us well this year and coming into the next budget year, I think it will as well. That kind of rounds out the revenue side between those two items and a little bit more in property tax revenue than we thought we'd get is another $1 million to $1.1 million than what was approved in the budget a year ago. The other side, on the expenses, there were a lot of vacancies. Some of those were planned to be hired in this year, but most of those were just from natural transition of retirements and people going elsewhere. So we budget always for full staff for the entire year. So out of those three main funds, I estimate about $900,000 in savings or expenses not incurred related to the vacancies. And then doing well in our healthcare plan since we've made those changes in the last few years. It's kind of hard to differentiate the healthcare savings with, because part of that is as well from vacancies, but I'm estimating about $1.2 million in healthcare savings. Forty eighth District Court, about $650,000 less in expense because our caseload ratio went down for that year. And then at the last meeting, I talked a little bit about the vehicles, that all the vehicles that were, or most of the vehicles that were planned for this year are not getting delivered till the next fiscal year. That on top of the stormwater projects, the bulk of those costs being delayed, that's probably about another $900,000. So that's about 3.6, 3.5-ish, and then 1 to 1.1 on the revenue. That gets you to that approximate $4.5 to $5 million that we're looking at. So the request, well, to step back, the, in the general fund, you have the, it's divided by activities, and you have to look at the budget amendments at each activity level within that general fund. So the transfers-out activity doesn't have enough room left in it to be able to maximize a transfer out to the equipment and replacement fund, assuming that that's the direction the board wants to go. So I'm asking for, to increase the budget amount for the transfers-out activity in the general fund by $2,975,000. And then that would allow us to transfer out in the next budget, or the next board item tonight, up to $5 million at fiscal year-end if those funds are available.
That's taken. Does anybody have any questions? I look for a motion.
I have a question. So Jason, your prediction is that we're going to finish with a surplus of 4.5 million in the general fund?
Maybe five. Yeah, I, I think that's a safe...
So by raising this to five, you're saying that we could transfer all of that surplus into equipment and replacement?
Yeah, leaving all my, all the numbers in as I have them right now, it's coming out to about 4.5, but I remember last year, we gave a little bit extra, and it turned out we actually used it and was, was able to transfer that out. Things turned out better. I tend to, I think as everyone knows, I tend to budget pretty conservatively so that we're never on the opposite side of that spectrum of, of overspending. So I think four, 4.5 is safe, and I think five is a possibility.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we approve the budget amendment for $2.975 million to the transfers-out activity in general fund.
Support by Treasury Keeps. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That does pass. And we have Jason next for the considering approval of transfer and commitment up to $4.6 million to the equipment and replacement fund.
So I don't know if this is an issue, actually, while I was sitting in the audience, I realized the number, for agenda item number 11, says 4.6, but the actual document is five. And it's probably my fault, I probably, when I gave this item to the clerk's office, I think at that time I was going to go with 4.6, but have increased it. So I am looking for approval now that the budget is amended and has the ability to do it to transfer and commit up to $5 million once the fiscal year-end is closed out.
We were going to make you sweat for a little bit, but Dirk said we should just tell you it's okay.
Oh, okay.
We're going to make it a little fun for you. Does anyone have any questions for Jason?
I just, well, I just wanted to make a comment. I, I think it's prudent. I think it's conservative. You know, if we didn't have the money here, it would be quote-unquote a surplus, and then it would sit, it would go into the reserve. And the only way really to use the reserve would be to have some kind of a deficit, which it really isn't a great way when we think about planning budgets, but that's the operational way to do it. So this really gives us a good mechanism to be able to not feel that, and the residents should know, that we're not looking at wanting to spend money just because we have it. We're looking at, I think, being pretty prudent with our resources and putting it then into a reserve and not having to have a shortfall and they have a deficit. So this is a good way to kind of side-balance sheet some money that we know we're going to need, and I think it's, it's a responsible way of utilizing our resources and our surplus. So thank you.
Definitely helped one, now that we have capital planned out for all the different departments, it definitely helps knowing what's coming. There are a couple of years coming that are quite significant, so.
No, just make the, make a motion. I, I know over the years, you've always been conservative with your projections, so feel very comfortable in making the motion, up to $5 million.
Support by Trustee Burnett. Support by Treasury Keeps. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That does pass.
Thanks.
Thank you.
So next, we have considering approval of proposed routes for the 2023 Jan Roncelli Safety Path Program, and we have Director Noah Maholsky.
Thanks. All right. Good evening. On behalf of Engineering Department, I'm proposing the Safety Path Program, Jan Roncelli Safety Path Program for the next fiscal year. Explain, there's a few details, because kind of back and forth, there's some work to be completed from last year. A little small, but the dotted blue lines are the proposed work for this year and the solid, I'm sorry, I said blue, but I meant green, and the solid green line are things that we're wrapping up from last year. Just a little bit overall, Hickory Grove and Telegraph is one of the finish-up areas. They had a gas main that was in the berm on Hickory Grove, and they had to do some redesign around that, and the contractor needed some assurances prior to kind of finishing off that section of safety path. Additionally, down here at Woodward, south of Corton, there were some holdout properties from the safety path that we constructed there last year, who have kind of seen the light on the safety path program and kind, came to the table. So we'll be constructing the remainder of that safety path down there on Woodward Avenue. New for this year, Loscher Road between Maple and Corton. I think I have like an overview of each one of these as we go forward here. So west side of Loscher Road, kind of biggest impact is here, and kind of aesthetics-wise, we're installing a significant amount of curbing to limit the impact of vegetation and the adjacent properties there on Loscher Road. So that's kind of the highlight there. Again, when we construct curbing, we can put the safety path closer to the road, and so it stays out of people's, you know, front yards and decreases the need for easements, that type of thing. Franklin Road, this is up in the business park section, up where HRC's home offices are up there. Kendry Avenue to Fremont and the kind of northern border with Pontiac there. So this section will complete this area through here and then interconnect with Pontiac to the north and serve this kind of business district. And this is where there's development going on with the skate club and a couple other different things into that area, so. Pontiac Drive up here is what we're talking about, that this is an area that we're going to study this year to do a little bit of a unique passage, and kind of the driver here is safety. If you understand this old Telegraph there and how that splits off, there's a guardrail issues and there's clearance issues with that. So we were concerned about putting that right up against the roadway and creating those safety issues. So we're going to look at routing it through these properties. Again, this will be kind of a unique thing for Bloomfield Township, because we're proposing to maybe do some lighting in that area. It's, it's a mature wooded lot, so there's not a lot of undergrowth. It will be a very unique walkway through, and the kind of master plan, the goal here is interconnectivity with a Clinton River rail trail that's up there and the big, you know, crossing of Telegraph Road, that's a pedestrian crossing up there. So kind of working with the difficulties of that space limitation in the road right-of-way right there, and the safety issues we feel are quite apparent there, this was the route that we chose to kind of look at this year for constructibility. Tertiary, Charles Marcus is in charge of the program for the township, and the Engineering Department has had some conversations with adjacent property owners there, and they are for it right now, for whatever that's worth. So, you know, when you come down to acquiring easements and that, sometimes those feelings become mixed, but that's kind of the overall push there. You can see these kind of orphaned or, or small plots that we're finishing out. It was kind of this weird area where that parking is adjacent to Woodward, and I think the fear and the liability concerns were that they'd have people walking across that parking lot. But now that we've constructed the other adjacent pieces of pathway, these people have come to us and are on board now. We mentioned Telegraph Road, that's a finish-out spot. I will mention, though, that up here, that's where our TAP grant is. Well, I say "our" but Engineering's TAP grant, that will fund a pedestrian crossing up there at Telegraph and Square Lake Roads. That's 24 at this point, construction, but I wanted to point that out to show this connectivity. Right there's Franklin, Telegraph's over, well, loops over here, so it'll finish up all of those. That kind of corner there that we've heard for years and years, oh, we don't want to walk up to, you know, the crossing at the Clinton River area, we don't want to go down south and that, you know, we can't make it across Telegraph Road there at Square Lake in one cycle of the, right, you know, you kind of get stuck out in the middle there. So this will address those areas, you know, and kind of give pedestrian access to our miracle mile up there, so. I haven't heard that term in a while.
That's right.
I'm old enough to know that one, but barely, barely, so. The numbers are in my memo, but this will just run through them for you again. One thing is that kind of that proposed work for, or the work from 2022, that's kind of a sign of the times, right? And our finance director would like us to spend as much money as possible out of the Safety Path Fund. Right now, we're limited by concrete and engineering at this point, so we will push to, to construct those paths, you know, and give everybody what they want as part of that master plan. So recommendation is, you know, to authorize the design bid and construction of the safety path per my memo there and incorporate the 22 leftovers from last year in this program, so.
I have one question about the Telegraph one, for where it would pass through the wooded area. Is there easement area that we could go? It appeared there was a street that kind of followed up where you would be on a street instead of a wooded area. See that, does that street there connect? So what you're connecting to, did we not want to go, what is the name of that?
Right here.
No, so instead of going up and cutting through the wooded lot, actually going through the neighbor, see how that, yes, like that route?
Um, I don't know. This one kind of was the development. I don't, I don't know. Can you answer that, Karen, why they kind of shied away? I would assume it's easement possibly, or, or low right-of-way? I would assume it's easement possibly, or, or low right of way, because though, if you're familiar with that area, those are real tight.
That I was thinking.
Developed real early, but.
Yeah, I think they're very narrow right of ways, and the master plan does call for it to go up Telegraph Road. The master planner actually calls for Telegraph Road all the way to Orchard Lake Road, but we don't feel that we can construct it safely because of the guardrail and the drop off. So there is a paper road, it's called, kind of in that area that is right of way, but there's no road there. So we may not need easements everywhere. There are some easements that we need there, so.
See where that ends there? That technically goes out to Telegraph Road here.
Yeah, it's a, yeah, it's a paper street, it's called, so. We do have some right of way in there. I think there are, but along Telegraph Road too, there's areas where the right of way goes to the back of curb. So we're going to be looking at easements, some easements in the area, and that's why we don't want to try and construct it in 2023. Because we're looking at those types of things.
So this really has to go through that design phase before we kind of look at even, even understanding what the costs are versus this, versus running it up Telegraph here versus another route through this area. Because, I mean, theoretically, any of these, if they have a larger, actually, that's a big berm right there, right? None of them go out until you get to Humphrey right there.
I think Humphrey's the only one that goes out, and I think.
That's where the light is there.
Need quite a few easements if we were to go back through there because of narrow right of way.
But going through the woods like that, I mean, safer and it, you know, some of the places where there's like the, the trees are over growing. Well, like one of our safety paths was like wide open when you first did it. And there's the split rail on one side, and the trees have grown over, and it's kind of like going through a little canopy. It, you know, then you have to come clean it out, but I mean, it, it's nice.
I think this area will be.
We think it would look really nice and.
That's, that's what makes me nervous is walking through as a female late at night.
Yeah.
We'd be looking at lighting and we'd be looking at, yeah.
Very unique, I think in the end, you kind of got to take that long view. Old, mature woods here, so you got that understory that's clear, so you'll get that look. Safety lighting, a real different flavor to the safety pass as what we have right now. But I certainly, my first vision was, okay, I can see this as a picture on the website, right? You know, with that dusk and with the lighting on the path and kind of meandering through the woods, so.
I was just thinking that, although I'm not normally a fan of illumination, you know that, but when you think of Franklin at 14 and, Franklin and 14 Mile, it goes down and it's very dark and very wooded, so it's at night not, doesn't feel very safe.
Right.
So as long as we're actually going to light it.
Yeah, we're looking at lighting, lighting and safety features, because it's not along the main road.
Okay. Anyone else have questions?
Yeah, can you go back to the full plan map for a second?
Yep.
Okay. So on the Woodward, so we, we need to construct fill-in between Manor and Maywood on Woodward right now. That's Mark 27. Is there a path that goes north from Big, north of Big Beaver on, on the east side of Woodward?
Yes, it goes up and adds that Strathmore, which is.
Connects to Strathmore.
Correct, right there.
And we're talking about adding Big Beaver East to Brookdale.
That's on the master plan, but it's no, not proposed at this time. So it's on the master plan along with that other nine miles that's kind of remaining to be constructed.
So the path that connects to Strathdale does exist?
Strathmore, yep, and that, we have had question about that access there. There is no pedestrian cross, so that goes to Brookdale right now.
Right, right.
No pedestrian cross.
Been on there a long time as a proposed plan for years.
Theoretically, it could have been on there since 2004 or even the beginnings of the program, certainly. You know, but there is no pedestrian crossing there, so they'd have to go down to Woodward anyway to make that.
And then explain to me what you're talking about, saying with these signs, the safety path ends. I know that section of Woodward has a lot of parking that's right up against the street. And so as I understand this, you're talking about path's going to go to that parking lot, and then there will be a sign that says safety path ends? And then they walk 20 feet and then it'll be safety path begins? I mean.
Yeah, pretty much. We're not, because we can't fit a safety path in there because of the way the parking is set up. Technically, the safety path will end at that parking lot. We assume people are just going to walk through the parking lot, but.
And we actually have to put up those signs.
We do put up those signs.
I personally like the Shell Silverstein version of the sidewalk ends, but they said that was not allowed.
What you're going to have, you know, is you're going to have these people that'll egress up to this parking or this sidewalk right here, right? When they get dumped, if, I'll go on to the next one, because it kind of shows those three sections. And then you would egress up to this walkway that goes along there. Now, somebody could just walk right across the right of way right there. That's kind of like the reason why some of these didn't want that in there in the first place. But I think they've overall seen the benefit, and we haven't had trouble with these existing sections.
We'd be just building those yellow sections.
Correct, yep. And there's already existing sections throughout here. This just kind of fills in the gaps for some outliers that we have.
How much is it?
If you're wondering why.
Hundred and fifty thousand?
If you're wondering why that request is on there, we've gotten some requests, some from people in wheelchairs and some from moms with strollers, that they, they've said it's kind of hard to get the wheelchair across a grass area verse if there was a, an area there.
So with four of those, you're going to have like eight of those little signs, right?
All these are continuous here.
That's continuous there, those four sections.
But you may have in the case like this, ending here where this parking lot then goes up.
Do we need easements from these properties?
So this project here, this was designed and bid last year, but we had a concrete shortage last year, so we ran out of time to actually construct them. So it's already been designed, bid, approved, awarded. Our contractor's ready to come back in the spring and.
So we've already paid the forty thousand dollars?
No, we haven't paid yet, no.
You said it was already engineered. So it was engineered for free?
Did you have engineering in there? I thought that was.
Well, it would have already been completed as part of last year's program, yes.
Engineering was completed, the construction was not completed.
So that's your Woodward Avenue east side there, 150. That's just the total.
Right, but the 150, according to the memo, includes forty thousand of engineering.
Is that what it was? Okay, I didn't have that number. So yes, that's already been paid. The construction has not.
And are you confident that that's going to be built this year? Because that's been on the books for a long, long time. And I understand the issues with some of the property, commercial property owners. But I know a lot of the residents on Manor Road, they, I think for at least five, eight years, they've been pushing for this.
The contractor is saying they're coming back in March to finish up this portion and then the Telegraph Hickory Grove portion, so.
That being said, you know, supply chains are very volatile at this point, and that's the reason we're in this position. So again, the mantra here, we'd like to push it even farther than this, you know, but just in a year of construction, we're already holding off the Telegraph roadside far north because we can't even bite off that. We, the feeling is, we need to be conservative. We won't be able to get it done if we bite off more than that to chew it at this point, so.
So it says that we've already approved those two sections, the Woodward section and the Telegraph Hickory Grove to Franklin section.
So they would have been approved as part of last year's program, they just didn't get completed. What?
Do we need to reapprove them?
Well, they're going to be an expense in this year's budget, so I don't, you know, I want you to prep you for what's coming ultimately.
Okay, but we already paid the engineering, so that was paid last year.
Well, we haven't paid the construction cost, so you're going to get a bill for a hundred and forty, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I want you to know, I want you to be aware of what the entire program's going to, I mean, because I might come back to you in October and say, hey, because of the first three, we couldn't get to the last three, you know, I mean, I, I can't tell you what's going to happen.
Well, that, that, the Hickory Grove to Square Lake, that's mostly complete, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's about eight hundred feet, eight hundred to a thousand feet left.
The south end of it?
The south end, yes.
Because I was, I was watching them and getting stuck in traffic when they were, when they were putting those in.
Yeah, well, and it closed down, we, you know, there was a contractor hit that line out there too, so it caused more snafus than, you know, than we even know. I think that was a Saturday, so.
I think it was a Friday night.
Friday, okay. Second Saturday for us.
It's burned in. At least nothing exploded or anything.
Well, and then, like, Lord willing, we can get this all done. Our Finance Director wants us to spend this money.
I remember making that call, saying, Olivia, I think something's going on as you were driving by. No other questions or suggestions? I will look for a motion.
So moved.
By Trustee Burnett, support. Support by Trustee Murray, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That does pass. Next, we have presentation of the Stormwater Asset Management and Wastewater Grant Program with also with Noah.
Yeah, and I can't take any credit for this, right? I've just been sitting in the meetings and I never applied for the grant. And I'm in charge when the last final bill goes out for it, right? So that's my involvement.
So you get to cut it at the end.
Nice.
I want to introduce the staff that was integral in it, or integral in it. Corey Borton back here, he's in engineering, he's one of the stars of Engineering Environmental Services Department, one of the leads for the township, you know, and, and this grant, it allowed us to do many things, okay? From a technology standpoint, we've upgraded from inspection of our sewer assets, we've upgraded. We created an asset management plan which positions us from the sewer end, which positions, positions us as one of the only entities in the state that has that plan and looks forward that far. You know, and basically just allowed us to kind of get eyes on the sewer. Obviously, once you start looking, we find problems which we're all intimately aware of. From HRC's standpoint, Chris Ross was the project manager with it, and then Karen Stickel had oversight of it. So they got a presentation for you. Because they're the experts, so I'm going to leave it to them.
Thanks, Noah. Get things opened up. So we are here tonight to talk about the SAW grant. SAW grant is a Stormwater Asset Management Wastewater Program through Eagle. And hard to believe, but we applied for this grant back in 2013, so it's been 10 years in the making. The state had a lot of interest in this program because it provided 75% to 90% grant money to do an analysis of your sanitary sewer system. So they had a lot of interest. So they doled out the money in rounds, and the Bloomfield Township was one of the last rounds to get the money, which was actually very good because you got to benefit from all the lessons learned through the grant program. So a little bit of background, again, in November of 2013, you applied for the grant. You received the grant in April of 2020, and the grant agreement was signed. You had three weeks, or years to complete all the work, so the completion deadline is March 1st, 2023. So after 10 years, we're approaching that deadline. The total project amount was a little over $2 million. Of that, 1.71 million was a grant, and the township had to pay 350,000 about. The grant was made available through the Michigan, it was the Department of Environmental Quality at the time. It's now in the Department of Environment, Great Lakes and Energy. It's changed names numerous times. And what Eagle really wanted communities to do was to start to look at their systems and start to plan for the future. Back in the seventies and the nineties, there was a lot of grant funding for big sewer improvements. That funding is no longer available. So we built all of these assets, and the state wants us to start looking at them and planning for the future. So we had to do several things as part of this, asset inventory and condition assessment, level of service, criticality of the assets, an operation and maintenance and revenue structure review, and then some long-term funding and capital improvement planning. And like Noah said, I oversaw the grant, but Chris Ross really did all the work, so I'm going to turn it over to him to present on what we did, and then we'll be available to answer any questions.
Thanks for the introduction, Karen. As she said, I'm going to go over the work that we completed as part of this grant, go through each item in more detail, but just to start off, just some highlights here. We were able to update the GIS, that's basically your database of all your sewer assets. Contains all the information about them, age, material, all that good stuff. Manhole inspections, we were able to inspect almost 5,000 manhole structures. And we were able to review the televising data for about 300,000 lineal feet of sewer, created a sewer CIP from that. And we also inspected nine of the, that's all the township pump stations, and generated an asset hierarchy and a capital improvement plan for the pump stations. One last thing to mention is the sanitary sewer model that we developed to determine if there's any areas of flow restrictions in the, in the township sanitary sewer system. Start with PubWorks, that's a computerized maintenance management system. It works in collaboration with the township's Esri ArcGIS. Again, that's your database of your inventory of assets. You can create maps, which you're seeing them today here, that are created through the township's GIS system. And then, so we always had the GIS system here. We've since incorporated PubWorks, which allows for onsite field access, routine inspections, asset updates, kind of your real-time in-the-field updates. The township purchased four different PubWorks modules, the mobile app, GIS Map Viewer, which allow for the staff to, again, instantly access the map out in the field and update as, as needed, as well as the inspection and work order modules, which help with planning, preventative maintenance, that kind of thing. Dive a little deeper into the sanitary manhole inspections. Again, we had completed almost 5,000. There's 6,000 sanitary manholes in the township. These, these were completed over the past six years. And that, that obviously is about 80% of the township was inspected. There, we're working to dig up some of the other ones that are buried or need traffic control, that kind of thing. We used NASCO Level 1 MACP inspection. That was the format of these inspections, and it found that almost 4,000 were in good condition. That means no defects, no deterioration noted from a visual perspective, looking down into the manhole. Can't quite read it, that's my bad on the font color there. A thousand of them were fair, and that's minor deficiencies such as roots, minor cracks, some chimney repairs and rust, just small things. The ones to mention are the 99 in poor condition. Those are ones that need maintenance or some sort of work. Normally, when we do this, we come up with a capital improvement plan that determines all, you know, the amount of money over the next however many years that's going to be needed to bring those manholes back into use or, you know, fully into use. This, for the township, only 99 of them were identified, and it was just small maintenance things.
Just a quick question.
Sure.
Are those pictures of roots trying to grow down to good stuff?
Absolutely.
Which category does that put it in?
That would be a, a poor. There's a little bit more going down at the bottom of the channel, the structure as well. But yeah, obviously, we want to tighten that up. That's always the goal. But yeah, so of those 99, it's just maintenance stuff, nothing that's, you know, large capital costs such as like replacing an entire manhole. Just things that are actively getting taken care of.
Yeah, left unattended, I guess those roots do finally get to the destination, get really happy, grow lots and block the.
Correct, yeah. Yep, so that's, that's the ultimate goal, is if, if nothing else, we need to convey the sewage, so, right, we're clearing them out. That's mostly what we found, was just cleaning root, cleaning up roots, debris that builds up in the manholes. Again, some minor chimney work that, you know, as structures get buried over time, raising them up, the small, small fixes, basically.
Right.
Going through the sewer televising in a little more detail here, again, we did about 58 miles of sewer televising with, using contractors. That represents about 25% of the township sewers. HRC reviewed the condition data, and we developed a sewer CIP, capital improvement plan. And then as we were identifying immediate needs such as Long Lake, a few others here and there, we, we've been actively pursuing those, replacing as needed, repairing. And the, the rest of the immediate needs found are going to be designed and constructed in 2023 or 2024. Going through the sewer CIP in a little more detail, much like the manhole CIP, you have scoring on your defect level. So zero or one are very minor defects, or, sorry, no defects or minor defects. Two or three, you're starting to get roots and deposits blocking the pipe. And then four or five are kind of the ones you want to act on. Those are, you know, it's kind of what you're seeing in the picture there where it's actually starting to collapse, or you're having structural concerns with the pipe. As I mentioned, so we, we've been actively working through these, what we call zero to five-year capital improvement plan action items. So those, that represents $8 million of the, again, this is 25% of the township sanitary system we got to look at. So $8 million is what we found. If we televise the other 75%, we're kind of over the next, say, five, 15 years, we're probably looking at another 24 million of dollars' worth of kind of immediate needs to the sanitary system. We didn't find too much that we recommended in the six to 20-year, just kind of. We didn't find too much that, uh, we recommended in the six to twenty year, just kind of re-televise, monitor as needed. Um, not a, not a whole lot found in long-term. Uh, this is just a map showing every, all the sewers in black are what we televise. So we kind of focused around that Telegraph Road and around the lakes in the northwest corner of the township. Uh, obviously the next, over the next few years, start working through the other sections of the township to get a good look at everything. Uh, we did inspect the township's nine sanitary pump stations. Um, it's worth noting that the last major, uh, replacement or rehab project was in two thousand and nine. So we're at about fifteen year, almost fifteen years since then. Most of the assets in the pump station last maybe thirty years. So kind of at that halfway point of where there's starting to get more major upgrades needed. I think, you know, the upfront costs in the zero to five-year CIP would be things like, things that go have smaller use, sorry, shorter useful life, so electronical components, communications, things like that are kind of in the forefront of what's coming next. And then getting into the generators, replacing those that are, last a little longer, but definitely do need to be upgraded at a certain point in time. That's what you're seeing there.
You should a question about that?
Sure.
So like the Franklin, uh, Road Station, that, that's the one, uh, pump station one that's right in front of the cider mill?
Yes.
And is the structure, the ramp, the wooden guardrails, all of that, is that part of this analysis? Or is that separate? Is that part of the sa- safety path?
Generally, yes, that one's a bit of a unique one because it got the boardwalk that goes around it. Typically, you know, we, we consider the pump station as everything inside the fence. So it's, you know, fenced off from the public, everything would fall into there. That one, I don't think we included that work because it's kind of, you know.
Safety path through the grounds.
Yeah.
So I, I guess what I'm really wondering is just the overall, um, I guess integrity and maintenance of that actual structure. Does that go, is that then in the safety path budget or is that, would that be in this budget?
I'll let Noah speak more to that.
Um, it would be in the safety path budget through the grounds division. And over the years, we've had three or four instances where they've had to make repairs. If you, there's some rotten wood out there that's on an angle and that type of stuff. So whether it's a resident walking by that calls us and complains or whether our staff finds it or that type of thing, but that's how it's handled through safety path in the grounds division.
Thank you. And while I'm asking a question, one more question regarding the, uh, manholes. When was the last time, was there a time when we, when that was done previously?
Uh, it was spotty, so there was an internal program, uh, that the DPW ran. Um, I, before my tenure here, um, what occurred is we had a manhole that had a tree growing out of it that was like twenty-five years old. And so I questioned the validity of the five-year manhole inspection program that we had. Um, and so we started looking at it and our staff, the record keeping wasn't good with it. And it wasn't up to the standard where it would be usable for, to make these decisions. Because, um, when you're talking about manhole, well, talking about sewers in particular, you're trying to limit the inflow of the material. So even in this case, it may not be the roots as much as the water going in to the sewer that we then pay sewer treatment on. So the kind of nexus of all this is to tighten up all of our sewers so we're not paying treatment costs on stormwater that's getting in there. Now, obviously roots can block up the sewer as well and create a backup situation, but they're truly indicative of water moving through that space, right? The roots are looking for the water and that water, we're all paying as ratepayers, sewer customers to treat it in Detroit regardless of where it came from, so.
I guess, I guess I'm just really surprised because I figured it would have been a long time that, you know, roughly eighty percent of the system being in good shape and not being looked at probably in a while is, is pretty good.
Yeah, yeah, and it's probably, you know, construction, if you use pre-cast, uh, manholes versus bricks, brick and mortar back in the fifties, that type of thing. So we're lucky there. Typically, our specs in the township drove this, right? We required cast-in-place, uh, manholes and that type of stuff. So, uh, you know, kudo, kudos to those who came before us with having that foresight, you know, and that, so.
All right, so a little bit more on the modeling. Again, we, we wanted to identify any areas where there may be flow restrictions or other capacity improvements needed in the township sanitary system. We use the EPA swim model to do this. Pretty basic stuff, uh, I guess from an engineering perspective. Um, and then the other thing to note is we will be able to use this in the future if there's, say, large developments going on where we need to take a closer look at, you know, what, what does this do to our sanitary system, what impacts does it have? Can they, you know, can we do this development basically on a sanitary perspective? So that, that'll be highly useful in the future for reviewing that thing kind of. It's very, it'll be very quick to do that. Uh, just a summary, kind of the estimated cost to date. Again, as Karen mentioned, it's the grant money that was coming from the state to the township is one point seven million. As of right now, we've, um, we've spent one point two or almost one point three million. Um, again, the grant ends at March first, but we're basically going to use the remaining four hundred thousand dollars to cover the manhole inspections, more or less. Um, so that money will get spent, won't get left on the table. Uh, and then just kind of wrapping up the grant process, again, we've kind of already gone, gone through this whole process. The condition assessment is what do I own, what condition is it in? Business risk evaluation is, what are your most critical assets? Obviously, you want to prioritize those in the capital improvement plans. And then looking at tho- those capital improvement plan, plan costs along with O and M needs to develop your rate structure. And RefTelis Financial Consultants, uh, completed the rate study that's required as part of the grant. Um, I don't think they found a funding gap, so that is good. Again, much like Noah mentioned, I want to thank Corey in the back for a lot of his hard work through this process. It's been, it's been a long, uh, long time coming, but we're at the finish line now.
Um, I'll say too, Corey, so this supplemented our staff's, uh, abilities and expertise. Corey is certified, uh, to review the videos and make decisions about how things are leaking. We also have two other staff that are certified, uh, through the program. And we have our own staff act kind of as a strike force out there and they go and videotape areas. And once they kind of find out there's a big problem, we pull back and that's when we hu- maybe hire a company to come in, which is what we had, uh, as part of this grant. Um, but that kind of complements our services then as we, because the one, it's not our business model, uh, in the O and M side to just, um, televise hundreds of thousands of lineal feet of sewer, right? That's a specialized, uh, operation that our staff have to focus on everything we're doing, right? So we have to operate in a way that we kind of find the smoking gun, then we call the others in to do the bulk of the work, you know, once we know there's a problem out there.
And I think too, with the televising that was done as part of this grant where we hired these contractors, we focused on areas that were harder to access. So along, along the lakes, along rivers where it's harder for township staff to get in there because these other contractors have more specialized equipment.
Yeah, like they have a, you know, units they can launch off of a four-wheeler versus our, you know, five-ton camera truck that we would have to back up into somebody's rear yard, you know, that type of thing. And it ties in to the fact that we're looking for ionized and trying to eliminate it, the fact that we're looking in all these low areas, right? Long Lake Road was a swamp there when they put the pipe through, so that's why it sank. Uh, Forest Lake, it was swamp between the lake and the tennis courts, that's why we've got a failed pipe there. Um, you know, so that's why you look in those areas, so. And I don't think you really have a decision to make on this.
I think we just wanted to.
News, right?
Look at, look at everything great the township did with all this grant money.
Yep, that was a great grant. Is there anything, anyone worth adding?
No, just, yeah, it was a great use of grant money, but on top of it, so we can, you know, look into the future as far as the infrastructure, where the concerns are, where there may need to be capital to the programs or repairs because we certainly don't want failures. And we talked about it several of our previous meetings about infrastructure. This goes right along with it, certainly a great use of the money and the skills. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks to the team, thanks to Corey.
Thanks, Corey, one of these days, Corey will come up. He's getting closer, you're on this side. Thank you.
Corey taught me there's no such thing as a flushable wipe.
No, there's not.
No, there's not.
There's not.
So the next we have is approved payroll and vouchers. Unless there's any changes or comments, I'd look for a motion.
So moved.
Moved by trustee Shostak.
Support.
Support by trustee Key. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That does pass. And, uh, next would be a motion to go into with the Township Labor Attorney to request a closed session pursuant to MCL fifteen point two six eight, one C.
So moved, support.
Trustee Shostak.
We do a roll call?
Oh.
There will be a roll call, I have to make the motion first.
Yeah.
So trustee Shostak.
And support.
Support by treasurer Keeps. And do you want to do the roll call?
Oh, sure, um, Mr. Barnett?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Key?
Yes.
Mr. Shostak?
Yes.
Mr. Keeps?
Yes.
I'm yes as well.
And I'm yes. So we will go in, we will be back. Sure, but we will be back tonight.
We will be back.
We don't know if we're going to, if there'll be anything to vote on, but we do have to come back at night. So we will be back. Your patience, and now we just have one more motion to go.
Uh, I move that we adjourn.
Motion by clerk Brooke. Support by trustee Barnett, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Great, thank you.
Thanks.